Ashley, could you please call the role?
Gorder.
Here.
Boyd.
Yeah, here.
Kilby.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Sabo.
Here.
Item 1.02, I motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
A second.
Discussion.
So, just one note, if you looked at the agenda prior to the meeting, item 6.03 also had an athletic handbook. We pulled that because there were some pieces that weren't ready. So, the agendas that you have tonight are accurate and that's what you're adopting. However, if you looked on the website, just know that that's why there was a change. So, as soon as that's ready, we'll put that on.
Gorder.
Here.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
We're voting.
You're voting on the agenda. Boyd.
Yes.
Kilby.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Sabo.
Yes.
Item 1.03, I move to approve the regular meeting minutes from 12:10, 20:25. Do I have a second?
A second.
Discussion.
Boyd.
Yes.
Kilby.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Sabo.
Yes.
Gorder.
Yes.
What, superintendent report?
So, just because our meeting is a little lengthy here in the beginning before we actually get to the recommendations to vote on, and we do have a student to recognize, what I would like you to do is look at item 6.01. And I just want to talk it through a little bit, and then you'll still vote on it when it falls, but at least I can share a little bit about it. So, this is a motion to approve a candidate for early graduation, as all state and local requirements for graduation have been successfully completed. And we just want to say congratulations to Noah Beatty on his early graduation as one of three national merit semifinalists in the class of 2026. Noah's achievement reflects both his hard work and commitment to learning. We extend our sincere congratulations to Noah and his family on this remarkable milestone. Noah will receive his diploma at commencement in May. So, my intent is to recommend for approval when it falls in the agenda, but at least wanted to make sure we got that recognition in early. I don't know if Ms. Rossi has anything else to add or to say.
You did such a wonderful job.
Wonderful. We're so thankful. Okay, so continuing on with the superintendent's report, tonight we have the presentation of the facilities improvement plan by our Director of Human Resources and Business Operations, Mr. Chris Walter.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
It's dry.
It's okay. I don't, it's probably me. Okay, I know you guys can hear me.
We can, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for having me. I'm very excited to be able to go through the facility improvement plan with you. Really, in this slide, this is, you know, you actually have the plan. You have the full plan that we've provided to you. This is just really an overview of the plan. We're going to move quickly through some of these slides because I think some of this is familiar to you, but I also want to make sure that you have the opportunity along the way to ask questions. So, if that's the case, or there's something in one of the slides or at the end, please make sure you do, as the board, you know, ask anything because I want to make sure that, you know, if I don't cover something or something that needs to be clarified, please do that. Really, what is the FIP or the Facility Improvement Plan? Really, it's just a roadmap for stewardship for the district as it relates to our capital assets. And so, that's really all it is in simplest form, and it really represents a very collaborative effort for what we would call a safe, functional, and sound facility for years to come. Also, as well going into this, want to recognize that, you know, this isn't, this is not in any way something that I put together without the concert of a lot of support people, and we'll speak with a number of them along the way or about them along the way. But I also want to recognize Mr. James Naas, our Manager of Facility Services, who's here as well too, who's been a strong contributor, especially in putting this plan together as well too. And in his work in implementing the projects and plans too. A legacy of strategic stewardship, this is, I think, one of the things that we may lose along the way if we're not careful, or we may lose the concept if we're not too careful, and that is that we've really come really far in our investment. And I just want to make sure we acknowledge that. You know, 10 years ago, 11, 10, 11, 12 years ago, we really only spent about $400,000 annually, and it was really a pretty reactive spend on our capital planning, and it just wasn't enough to keep our buildings in the kind of shape that they are. And so, you know, we've been working very hard over the last 10, 11, 12 years to get to the point where we're funding at $2.5 million. And really, this is a data-driven decision, and it's something that really has made a significant difference in our district from being, moving from reactive to proactive. So, for those of you who've been on the Facility Committee and have been around, you're probably aware of that. But I just want to make sure those that are newer to the board are aware that it's made a really big difference, and it's, it's made, it will make difference for decades to come for our district, for our kids, our community, and the buildings that we have. We're very proud of that. Some other pieces here too, you know, we have really, you know, to say that we do have very strong and good solid condition with our facilities. We do something called a Facility Condition Index, and we'll talk a little bit about that and break that out and tell you what that is as we go through the presentation. But it's in a very strong, a strong indicator there. The number sits between zero and one, and that's in a very solid, strong place, especially for buildings, the age of our buildings too. Want to also thank not just the, I want to thank first of all, the Board of Education, our Superintendent Treasurer, also our Capital Planning Committee. Lauren, Steve, you're on that as well too and have served on that, and I just wanted to thank the committee, the board, the treasurer, superintendent. This is a collaborative work, and we're really committed, I know all of us, to dedicated stewardship and long-term sustainability for our district as well too. As we walk through the presentation, I just want to make sure you kind of understand that, you know, we want to remain agile. We want to have the backdrop of this be for our students, for them to grow and thrive. This next slide really is just a quick visual of all the things that kind of go into the FIP. We consider our strategic plan. We consider facility condition assessments. We use our capital planning management software as well as ongoing maintenance data. And all of these things kind of go into the FIP, if you've probably seen from the report itself. This is about our fiscal sustainability, and the question is, how much money is the right amount of money? So, there is actually kind of a scientific answer to this. How much money should you spend to maintain your schools? And, you know, you know, when we started down this road, we uncovered a number of different, you know, best practice models. And this one's one we've turned to a number of times, the belly and loftness model. It really talks about this idea of 2% of your plant replacement value, sometimes also called current replacement value. If you had to build the school the way it's designed right now, from the ground up, that would be the PRV, the plant replacement value, or the current replacement value in construction dollars. And you typically are aiming to spend about 2% of that. And so, you know, as we look at our valuation of our district and the appraisal, that's right where we should be. So, I just want to kind of assure you that we've been tracking with that. The nice thing about that is inflation's kind of built in if you call that number out because, you know, our appraisals continue to rise because construction costs rise, and so, the construction that costs to do projects and replacement rises too. So, that's built in, and it's really, you know, for that reason, it's a really good model for us. You can also see that we're spending $2.5 million kind of on average annually for these expenditures, and we'll get into some more of those details as well too.
Is that reflective of that 2%? Is that 2.5 million annually?
Yes, yes.
Or that 2%?
Yeah, yep. You'll see, this chart kind of breaks down the revenues. The revenues are coming in from taxes and then transfers in. And I just want to thank Ashley for this chart here. Then the expenditures that have been actual expenditures and then estimated moving forward. Then the variance below, and then the ending balance in this permanent improvement fund that funds all of this. You know, we look five years out, so we're actually kind of looking in what you would call 2026 fiscal year right now, and then looking out through 2030. So, we have projects and plans and finances that go out five years, and we kind of just always keep looking out five more years every year.
So, these numbers, go back to that real quick, Chris, because I just want to clarify. These numbers are based on our fiscal basis. It doesn't always work with the project years because all work has to be done in the summer. When you're doing work in the summer, June falls in the prior fiscal year, and July falls in the next fiscal year. So, you're not going to see exactly 2.4 every year. A lot of times, we have a project that was contained in that 2.4 from a prior year. The expenditures didn't actually happen, but it was encumbered. So, the money was set aside. They were working on the project, but all those checks didn't go out until the next fiscal year. So, you'll see, you know, the actual is not going to be exactly 2.4 when you're looking at those prior years. The $3 million for this year and then those higher numbers for the past couple of years were because of the years prior. We had lower cash expenditures, but the project years were based on about the 2.4.
So, we're always trying to carry a bit more in there, and you'll see that, you know, you'll see all of our projects. We talk about projects. We just plan for summer, but right in the middle of that is July, and so, it's a switch over in fiscal year, but.
Chris, I speak two different languages and we try to.
Right. I come down, and she's like, okay.
We try to be in the middle.
It works. It works. We make it work.
I'm sorry.
No, keep going, please.
Taking over your presentation.
No, please.
Those two bullet points were there, we're not going to be transferring in in '26, probably not in '27, because if you remember the end of last year, when we had the uncertainty with the cash balance rules, we had that money set aside in our general fund, but that was not going to be good enough for the way that they were looking at our cash balances, so we transferred it out of there into the PI, so now we're holding it in PI. So, we're not going to make transfers for '26 or '27 because we made them in '25 already.
And you'll also see the total expenditures in 2024 and 2025 higher because of a couple of things. One, we completed a really big HVAC project, but two, we also had some grant funds as well too. And so, you know, we're grateful for that, but those are part of the total expenditure as well too. And we're always looking for additional funds and grants, as some of you know, you know, the track resurfacing piece as well too, and, you know, had a matching grant. So, we always were looking for that. And one of the ideas of planning ahead allows us to be able to quickly respond to grants, to be those first people into supplement to the grants because, of course, you know, we have our projects already kind of termed out, and we know what we're going to do. And then, you know, if it's not due for three years, but we know there's a grant coming out there for elevators, well, we can accelerate that project, you know, which is, there's some strategic planning with that that saves some money, or at least brings outside money from our local tax dollars. And this is just simply a concept of like three different ways that we plan. And if you look at column A, really just the most simplest is just repairing things that break. You know, Mr. Naas does a great deal of this with all of his team. These are a lot of the in-house facility projects. Or just repairing HVAC equipment, or fixing lighting, or, you know, anything. And many of these things just happen on a day-to-day basis. So, that's the small stuff, but that stuff matters. You know, preventive maintenance that's done, that helps our stuff last longer as well too. So, having that plan is really important to maintain our assets. And then this capital projects, which is kind of the bread and butter of this presentation, is these projects that are really over $50,000 in general, but they're usually generally less than $2 million, you know what I mean? And so, we would talk about those as capital projects, and that's the project there. If you look down at the bottom of column B, where the Capital Planning Committee has a lot of input and does a lot of work. And then the Master Planning Committee, we bring that committee together every five to seven years. We've been bringing that committee together the last couple of years to do some short-cycle assessments that, short-cycle master planning work, and we'll talk a little bit about that in the presentation. So, this part right here, I think I'm going to skip the slide. This is the FCI. This is our Facility Condition Index. This really just talks about, it's just a metric that basically says the total repair and revenue versus the total replacement value of the asset. You know, so you might say, you know, what percentage of the asset needs to be replaced and which, and how much of it is the total asset cost? And so, the lower the number, you know, just like in golf, the better. And so, we're here at .14, and you just want to be, you know, we try and shoot to be under .2. You know, with the buildings the age they are, you're never going to get down to zero because there's always things that need to get done. We like to say entropy happens and things move to disorder. Things degrade over time, but we're going to try and stay ahead of that. And so, that's kind of where we like to be. We're really grateful that we're at that place, and we work really hard to stay there. So, we have a tool, you know, which is a capital planning software. It's called VFA by Gordian on every single one of our assets and systems in there, you know.
Can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
Like, what do you mean? Like, how broken down is like an asset or a system? Like, you know, what's the?
It would be.
I'm sorry, like, that's a.
Yeah, it would be every one of our, like, a pump that might be pumping water from a boiler. It would be the boiler. It would be the electrical system. It would be the switchgear in the system. It would be the lighting on our stadium. It would be the exterior lighting here. If you think of like all of the plumbing, all of the electric, all the lighting, it's broken down into just about every system that can kind of be replaced. Every one of our single rooftop units is on there. It's probably, how many lines of assets?
A good example would be the heat vent heater behind you. That's one. You know, all those assets, it's broken down to that level. It's also broken down to the flooring, the lighting.
By room, by building, by campus, and every one of those is tagged with a condition.
I was going to say, each of these has a condition index?
It has, yeah. Each one of those has a condition of when, the value of that for replacement, and the date at which it should be replaced. And so, then that software basically calculates that and says, you know, of all the value of everything in the, it's just like if you would take any, you know, a car, your house, everything that needs to be replaced. It's a lot of categorizing. It's a lot of, you know, auditing, and you couldn't do it without a really pretty powerful database. But that powerful database allows us to then, if it's all organized and using a software to keep up. And sometimes that predictive thing is great, and other times, we have to kind of have, you know, go out and take a look at it and like, oh, that motor actually is in much better shape than it was, or the, you know, the generator at Gurnee is calling to be due and replaced, but it's fine. And we had somebody out to inspect it six months ago, and they said it's got three years, so we're not going to replace it. And then we'll just, we can edit that database, and we do. You know, we edit it every year. And then when we do new roofs, or we do paving, or whatever, we'll edit the database. So, it's just a live, think of it as a live version of everything in our district. It's pretty neat software, yeah. Questions? Okay. This is just a graphical representation of what happens when you don't keep up with your buildings and where we are from an FCI perspective, and what optimal performance looks like. Down at the bottom is the time index of, in years of your campuses you're building, and this is based on the work by Tolk there in 2007. And then where we are just kind of shows, you know, I think if any of you were around when the intermediate school was failing so bad, it got, we hadn't been investing in it to the extent we needed to. And this just shows, you know, how we need to stay ahead of those things and how we are staying ahead of those things to never get in that position again, you know. And that's just about why stewardship there. So, what projects do we choose? There's a number of different ways. We talked about the software that we use. We have some individual assessments that we sometimes have by our techs or engineers if we want to have, you know, we had a roofing assessment done where we had a big roof scan that was done this year through drone or flyover, and, you know, used IR and infrared to map all of our roofs, and we kind of figured out which roofs were going to use. We use this scoring project as well too. For every individual project we do, we score it. And this project scoring card is basically on safety. It gets one or zero, Asset Protection Program Efficiency, and then two points for probability of failure and impact of failure. So, as we go down through all of the different projects that we have in this matrix, if you look on the right, they all have a score. And this is just, this is two, these are the, this is the five-year plan, and it just basically has all these projects in a spreadsheet. I love spreadsheets, and you can kind of see how they score those. It gives a lot of detail. You don't need to get into that far detail. What's that?
Same golf scoring. We want a lower point, we want lower points?
Uh, lower points in this is better.
Okay.
Higher points means it's going to be a project that should be replaced pretty soon too. And the probability of failure and impact of failure scored higher because obviously, you know, if you have something that's going to have a high impact of failure, and it's highly probable to fail, that's bad with kids around or staff around. You want to make sure you take care of it. So, we try and keep ahead of those things too. This just talks about the idea that we just don't fix things, just only fix things. This is, our house is about our students. And so, a lot of the projects that we do, we really work to try and enhance learning that's connected to our directional system to connect, create, and challenge. This is one of our projects we did a couple of years ago, and tried to touch each part of the campuses too, but it's an outdoor learning project. That's at the middle school, and so, just making sure that we're aligning with our strategic plan. Here's the projects we did this past summer. You can look at these. I don't need to go into all of them. We do some paving every year. Didn't do any roofs this summer. We've got a few coming up in 2026. You saw the improvements to Harris Stadium. We always, we have a fleet management plan for our vans, our trucks, and our buses, and then we respond to that every year with some purchases out of these funds. We always look at safety and security as an aspect. This signage here that we have up was a project that we do where we were signing all of our buildings for safety and security. You know, we worked with the police department on that. And then, so we did some minor work at the bus garage, and we're going to do some minor work this year at the bus garage, not major, but trying to do some things to make that space more functional at a basic level. So, those are some things we've done there too. Any questions on that page? This just basically looks at what we're planning on spending in the next five years. I can probably tell you every time we look at this every single year, that number can change because projects and priorities can change, but this is what five years out looks like. I know that, you know, as we look at more things, as you get closer to the next year, you have a little bit more information. So, this is not, this isn't static, but this is what we're looking at now for five years out. And then these are the projects for the summer. You'll see some of these come up, I think, in February. We have bids that will come back early February for the roof project and the paving project. Those are probably going to go out in the newspaper this next week for public bidding. The high school comments flooring, we were intending to do that last year, but it needs to be done, and so, that's going to be done this, the summer as well as some investment in our fleet. And then we have two security projects, one where we're improving classroom door hardware at the high school. And we may try and actually pick up the whole campus. That would get us on the same security key system and lock hardware system that was implemented at the intermediate school that is, you know, that will be across the entire campus, which would be really helpful to have the same key system across the whole camp, not just, all of our campuses. We're that way on exterior doors, but this would hopefully get us that way on all doors, including interior doors too. So, so that project's in the works. I think we're meeting next week on some planning for that. And then you saw some renovations on the interiors, like restrooms, break room for the bus garage. And we're totaling 1.953 for those projects on the budget side. We talked a little bit about the short-cycle master planning work, and these are the two projects we've been looking at with the committee. Recently is the transportation facility, which has been on pause. That's been on hold for a while, but we have the drawings completed with that. And it's times weighted on market conditions, so, you know, that's a project that could happen at some point. And I do believe we have some funds set aside for that, for sure. We've been working on that. And then the athletic facility, we've been doing some work on Harris Stadium, the locker rooms underneath Harris Stadium, and then the high school gym locker rooms underneath the gymnasium as well too in the high school, which if you've been in any of those spaces, and I know our committee's been in those spaces, it's, you know, those are two projects that we would, we were considering looking at in the future, you know, just evaluating those. And any of these projects might be ripe for partnering with support organizations or community as well too. So, and then, this was just a summary slide for you. I don't read through it, but I just thought it kind of brought some things together here on, you know, disciplined stewardship, you know, just really our environment for our students as well too, and making it, you know, you know, we're not expanding our footprint, our square footage with enrollment right now. We're really trying to make every space as improved as we can in every environment, working for our students. And then, we talked a little bit about this ability to kind of look out and have projects ready gives us some strategic advantage. And so, really, the whole idea here is, again, really about our kids and our students, and making, you know, inspiring all to grow and thrive.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chris, can I just ask or say one thing at least? I don't know if you want to speak to it, but I just, I think it's incredible the way that you started off this slide by deck. I think the slide that you had was legacy of strategic stewardship. And on Friday, I think we're about to celebrate your legacy here, right? And close out this chapter. So, I just wanted to say I love marrying the two. And is there anything that you would like to leave us with? Because I do think that a large part of this FIP, you know, when I first got on the board, I think my first OSBA meeting, I got to watch this work being presented and people filling the entire audience, like standing room only because they wanted to learn how to do this.
Yeah.
Right? And bring it back to their campuses. So, what's something, since this is so much of your legacy and you're about to move on to this wonderful life of retirement, that you want us to take on from this work and make sure that it rings true?
I just think it's embedded into what we're doing right now, you know, and it's because of a lot of group of people over years of just kind of studying something really, you know, with depth and putting systems together and then making the fiscal commitment. And then everybody, I think, you know, it has, the whole idea, it makes just great sense. It's just, you know, I mean, do the most you can with what you've got for our kids, and I think that that rings true with our community and with, not just with our taxpayers, but with all of us, you know, who wouldn't want to do that? I mean, and as educators, I think we're stewards of our students, you know, first and foremost. And so, this is only one part of that, but, you know, if you don't take care of your house, you know, to the best of your ability, you know, with the best of your resources. Many districts don't have, you know, haven't worked to be the same place we are, and it's hard, you know. But we're in a place strategically where I just think it's, you know, if you look down and see Patrick Cohen there watching that, I put that up there because I thought, like, that's, you know, 110-year-old, you know, entrance to a building that we, that we've renovated and kept, and, you know, it has some meaning, and I just, I think it's really, it's kind of neat to be a part of that. So, yeah, I don't, and I'm just grateful, I'm grateful to be retiring from Chagrin, and I'm grateful to have been a part of this. And I've learned a ton. It wasn't really, it wasn't really my thing I went to school for, you know. So, yeah, thanks.
Well, thank you for always having been stewards of our students and stewards of our house. You've left us a great legacy to vote off of, and I hope that we continue on and can keep it alive.
Yeah, and I will mention too, we've got, you know, you should feel confident. We have a really strong team of administrators that know this too. And I've been meeting, you know, with Mr. Doherty, and Mr. Naas has kind of always been here all along the way. So, there's not a loss of knowledge base. You know, not to mention, we've got a really great facilities team of people who take care of the buildings and take serious their work too. So, you know, I think that that's something to be really proud of, is just, you know, just invest in the people, and you guys have got the opportunity to do that, so, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
So, on that note, how do you celebrate, Chris Walter, and a legacy, you might ask?
Yes.
Right? And so. And so, we have such a great team of people that we wanted to make sure that we picked the exact, kind of project that would really represent Chris and his legacy and how he served Chagrin Falls Schools. So we are having a flash food drive, um, that started this week. And so as we celebrate his retirement, we're inviting our school community to honor his 15 years of service with a meaningful act of giving. And in addition to serving our district as both a principal and a director of operations and human resources, Chris has long given his personal time to helping others. So we hope that this food drive reflects the spirit of service. So we started on January 12th through the 15th. Now, I need to make a statement about this. So there's this thing that's called the snow day calculator. That's an AI calculator. And it, it decide, it does not decide whether or not, it likes to decide. And right now it would be in the high nineties. It has no influence on our decision. However, since it's in the high nineties, I feel that I must say to you that we cannot let Mr. Wifter down. And if we are closed for some reason, which we are not, at this time, you could drop off cans to the buildings on Friday, um, to the offices because they'll be open. So if you didn't get to drop off cans today, and for some reason, not because of the calculator, and we're not, we wouldn't have our offices open tomorrow. Um, you could drop them off on Friday. I want to tell you two stories. I was at Gurnee doing an observation and two families walked in and donated cans. Just brought cans that were fa- fabulous. And then I'm sitting in my office today and Chris comes in perplexed with three cans, three different things he had eaten as a child, and 200 cans had been donated in his honor just today with some childhood memories. So, this is your challenge. Um, we're trying to collect 1,500 items for 15 years of service of non-perishable food items for the Greater Cleveland Food Bank. And so families, you can send those tomorrow with your students when we have school. Um, if we don't, you're welcome to drop them off on Friday and they can be dropped off at any building office and that includes central office. So Chris, we hope we can reach our goal and, um, show how much we appreciate the service that you've given Chagrin Falls.
Fantastic. Treasure? Okay. Oh, right.
Yeah, and don't feel obligated to stay for the entire meeting. Also, you may have a busy morning with, only have any calls and things. Driving the road to 4:00 AM.
The calculator.
We know what your roles are.
I am feeling much better about forcing my 10-year-old to walk to school with like a huge bag of tuna cans in his backpack yesterday.
One thing about that fit before we start talking about our mostly general fund finances. Investing in those, it looks like, you know, we took our investment from 400,000 to 2.4 and that might sound like if you're just looking at that and that's all you hear, it's whoa, why? By doing that, it extends the life of all of those assets. And so in the long run, we save a lot of money. I wanted to make that very clear. That, that, that plan has certainly saved the district money. Okay. Monthly financial highlights, so, uh, financial reports will be in the treasure section, um, later in the meeting. We're gonna go through some highlights for the month. Um, December, I don't have December yet because January just closed, um, a couple of days ago. So we don't have time in order to get everything to you so that you can review it before the meeting. So we are running a month behind here on these reports. So in November, we started out with $21.3 million in the general fund, um, received 317,000, spent 2.8 million for a deficit of 2.5 for that month with an ending cash of 18.8 million. So, oh, this should have been updated. I apologize. That should say 18.8. Did not carry over. I will fix that. I think it's correct in the reports. Um, so taking a look at our revenue, when you look at that $317,000 number, it's not large compared to previous months, um, but previous Novembers were right in line. Um, and that's because we don't receive any taxes in November or December. So these two months, uh, were very low on revenue. Year-to-date, um, you know, when I say our revenue stays pretty flat, I am telling the truth. Um, here's our revenue for the last couple of years. It's, that's not exact, almost exactly the same place we were. Talking expenditures, um, November, we're looking at this orange here is the current year. Slightly for the last couple of months, we're slightly below the prior year, so that's good. Next month, you're gonna see this pop up again. This was a few years ago. We, um, returned our advances in December. And then the last several years, we, we did it in June. This year I did it in December again to get those, um, grant funds all situated in December. So the next month, you're gonna see that, a line here that's gonna look closer to this one than these. Okay. Expenditures on a year-to-date basis, you can see we're running almost exactly where we were yes, yesterday. Last year, um, we were at 15.2 million in, um, November of last year. We're at 15.2 November of this current year. Cash fund balance, we're down to 18.8 million. Again, orange is current year. These are some prior years. And you can see that, um, fluctuation that we see every single year as these higher, um, peaks here are when we receive our, um, cash from our taxes and then we spend those down in these valleys here. And you can see we are lower than we were in the previous four years at this point of the year. Self-insurance fund, we're running at about 2.7, 2.8 million. Very steady and, um, functioning exactly as we had intended when we created this. Deposits and investments, this is a picture of where our money currently, well, not currently as of today, but where it was at. Why does this keep doing this? Um, as of November. Okay. Um, anything on the monthly financials before I move to the, um, spotlights? Okay. In December, every year, the CUP report comes out. Um, that's a report from ODE that compares every single school district in the state of Ohio on numerous, um, data points. Um, one thing that we always like to look at and the people are very interested in is how do our salaries compare, to other districts in the state? So, um, this link here, if you're interested in looking at the report and you're a data nerd, click on this. I'm gonna show you at the end, um, how to do this, but it's on, I think, every single slide in this section. So if you really want to go look at it, um, it's there for you. Okay, so what I did here was I pulled off of that report sal, average salary for teachers, for all of the schools in Cuyahoga and Geogu Counties. If people are, I apologize. If people, I'm gonna keep my hands off of it. If people are moving, um, into our district or into the area and they're looking, um, at the schools and comparing them, um, you know, we're compared most often to districts in our area. So I like to pull our counties. Um, the orange, um, column there is Chagrin. The green is an average of all of those columns. Um, so you can see our teachers are, um, a little bit above average. On average, teachers in Cuyahoga and Geogu Counties make $79,000. Ours make little or, or almost 83. Um, but if you look, the range here is not large. So all of these districts here are in the same area. So we're right, you know, we're right in the middle. Okay. One thing, when I was looking at this, the numbers didn't seem right to me. And I was like, that doesn't sound, you know, normally we're closer to the middle, um, we're closer to this green. Um, and so when I looked at this, I thought, what, what's happening here? Also, that number looks strange to me because last year, looking at 24, our average was 85.8. So our average salary for our teachers actually went down. Teachers are not making less.
Is it retirement?
We did not cut anybody's salaries. Yes, correct. So, um, when a teacher retires, they're at the higher, they're at the top of the pay, pay scale. Um, when you hire in new, less experienced teachers, they're at the bottom of that pay scale. So when you have a lot of retirements, that's what happens. Um, interestingly, we are not alone. So if you look at 25's average for the counties was 79. 24's average the year before is almost 84. So, that is not a Chagrin, um, phenomenon. That's happening all over. Sorry, I pulled in 24 is just for comparison's sake. One other thing that I'm asked, um, the last couple of years, instead of just comparing to Cuyahoga and Geogu, how do we compare to other districts across the state? We want to compare ourselves not just to our, you know, local districts, but to other high-performing districts. So I pulled some, I went through the CUP report and just looked at the numbers. Pulled districts that had, um, income that were si, was similar to ours. I went to the state report card and looked at, okay, who were the highest, um, who had the highest scores on the report card? And I included all of those. And I just selected the districts first and then I threw them in here and we are smack dab in the middle. Um, I did not manipulate that at all. I just kind of went out and chose some districts and thought this, this sounds, you know, these are the ones that sound great to me. We hear Indian Hill a lot. You know, we hear River, which is obviously on the other, um, chart, but you can see it a little bit better here with fewer districts. Um, you know, Madeira is always kind of at the top as far as, um, score on the report card. Marion was up there, um, so I just kind of grabbed from there and then, um, put them in here. And this is where we, um, this is where we land, talking about teachers. That, I thought that was really interesting. If I did not select the school that you would like to compare us to, um, I'm gonna show you how to do that. But let's talk about administrators for a minute. So administrator's salary is something that we hear about a lot too. People are interested in that as well. Again, orange is Chagrin, green is the average. This is Cuyahoga and Geogu. You can see our administrators are slightly below the average for Cuyahoga and Geogu. Um, when you compare us to those same schools, we are closer to the bottom, um, in salary. But if you would like to look at any other districts, you're gonna go, you're gonna click on this link or the link on any other slide, because it's all the same place. It's gonna take you out to ODE's website. Over here are all the historical reports. So if you're curious about, you know, trends or how things are, are progressing, um, take a look at it. You can select whichever year you want. I am going to, am I on 25? I'm on 25. Click here. That's gonna download it to your device. You're gonna open it and click enable editing. So, it takes you first to this page. You're gonna look at these tabs down here. If you just want to see everything, go to district data. It pulls them in an order of IRN number, which means nothing to anybody, so I typically like to sort it. This puts it in alphabetical. I just like to look at it that way so that I can find districts that I'm actually looking for. If you look across the top here, these are all of the metrics that they're comparing us on. Square miles, district density, enrollment, um, some statistical data on our students, um, economically disadvantaged, our teachers' average salary, how experienced our teachers are. Cause that's a big, um, factor in salary. So like you saw, in a year where you have a lot of, um, retirements and you have a less experienced staff, you're gonna have a lower salary. So it's not always, this is trying to get as close to apples to apples as they can get it. So that's why they have all that information in there. People administrator ratio, again, when you're looking at sa, um, administrator salaries, some districts might call one position an administrator and another district might have that same position and not call it an administrator. So, you're gonna have fewer administrators, but you're gonna have a higher average salary. So you can't just look at one, um, thing. I only put salary on there because that's what people ask us most about. But, um, if you really want to see the whole picture, there's tons and tons of data in here. Um, information about, you know, property taxes per pupil, our total valuation, how much is homestead, median income, average income, all, all kinds of information. I'm not gonna read them all. I do kind of kick out over this. I apologize. It is really fun. Okay, so go back to this first page. If you want to compare us to somebody else, you're gonna click in this first one here and you're gonna find our district. You have to use the scroll. It won't let you start typing. Yeah. So, it's gonna pull us in here and this is not every single item that was on that, um, page, but it's a lot of the most important ones. They compare us to what they consider similar districts. You can see that actual group if you're interested. I think we like to make our own comparisons, so I usually tend, tend to kind of disregard this. Um, and then this is the statewide average. Any district that you want to compare us to, you can come in here and select one. So if you're looking to compare us to, I don't know, who do we want to look at?
Bay Village.
Who?
Bay Village.
Bay Village.
Marymont seem, in Wyoming, seem to be hitting next to us in a lot of, almost everything.
Okay. It is really irritating that these are.
Just click and, and press the.
Yeah, I know, just anyway. Um, okay, Bay and, what'd you say, Marymont?
Marymont. I'm on the, I'm on the other link that you mentioned where you can just, the reports portal.
Oh.
And so that's what I'm, you know, like it shows that, like, you know, it shows all of these different components. And Marymont and Chagrin seem to be right neck and neck.
So, here you can very easily make these comparisons, um, pull, this is already in Excel, so you can pull out whatever you want, make graphs, charts, um, if you would like me to make graphs or charts for you, I'm happy to do that. It's my favorite part of my job. But, you can compare on any of these data points. So here, again, you know, Chagrins teachers make an average of 82, Bays make an average of 81, Marymont an average of 81. So we're all pretty similar there. Um, administrator salaries, Chagrin 97.6. This is the state average, so we're looking at Bay, 96, pretty close, Marymont 134. So theirs is much higher. Uh, but if you look at their number of administrators, they've only got 10. So that makes sense.
Yeah.
Um, so they've probably got some maybe supervisory level positions that they're not calling administrators. Property taxes, you know, we talk a lot in Chagrin about, we have, um, a high valuation, and most of our valuation, 92%, is in our residential properties. These guys are in that same position. If I tried to pull Solon in here, you would see a much larger, or a much smaller percentage here because they have more industry. So they're gonna have a much higher percentage when you're talking about class two. So they have more businesses, um, that are paying into their taxes. So, um, you know, it, it, we always want to compare ourselves to districts. Everybody else wants to compare us to each other. And it's very easy to just kind of pick out one thing, um, but this gives more of the whole picture. So, um, anything you're looking at, go, feel free, go out here and, um, play with it. If you have questions or, you know, you're kind of analyzing something and you want to, somebody to talk about it with, call me. I'm happy to talk about it. That is all I have. Okay. Public participation. Is there anybody on there, Mike? I guess everybody else is gone. Jared, you wanna do a pledge?
Okay. All right, consent agenda, item 5.01. I move to approve all items of the consent agenda as presented. That is items 5.02 and 5.03. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Kilby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sabo?
Yes.
Fordner?
Yes.
Hoy?
Yes.
Okay, superintendent's recommendations, we are at 6.01. The candidate for early graduation that we discussed earlier. Okay, superintendent's recommendations, we are at six point oh one, the candidate for early graduation that we discussed earlier. I move to approve a candidate for early graduation, as all state and local requirements for graduation have been successfully completed. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Boardner?
Yes.
Hoy?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sabo?
Yes.
Item six point oh two, I move to approve the following policies to be adopted and revised as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do you wanna talk about this?
So, just, all of these are updates to either adopt or revise based on legislation, and it, it was specifically tied to van drivers. Um, and so that's what you were updating in each of these, and we get our updates through Neola, who is our policy writer, and then our policy committee goes through each and every one of those. We also meet with the people that are in that department, so for example, people like Mike Morgan, uh, and Chris Wolfter. And we review what those components are, what the impact is, and then this would be the final result, um, that's recommended to you. So these are just related updating policies.
What?
Can I, for Neola, do we, is the, there are typical clauses applicable to us where they say if you vary from their written policy in any way, that they will not guarantee, like, protecting you, representing you?
Correct. So then we have attorney review if we don't agree. So if there's something written that we are concerned about, or that we think doesn't fit what our district does, then we would send that to legal for review, and then they give their stamp of approval. But then Neola would still upload and do whatever we board approved as our policy. So, what's kind of unique is that when you go into board docs ourself, like, and actually look at our policies, they're not all template, if you will, I'm using template air quotes, Neola policies. There are policies that have been written or transferred specifically for Chagrin schools. And I'll use the facilities rental agreements and things as one, because our rental agreements look like no one else's. And so those were designed in-house, those were approved by legal, and then uploaded. So that's how we get it, if we're changing their words.
Okay. Hoy?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sabo?
Yes.
Boardner?
Yes.
Item six point oh two. Six point oh three, I move to approve the Chagrin Falls Coaches Handbook as presented, do I have a second?
I second.
Discussion?
So, this is again, just to reflect the changes that we just approved in policy, 'cause our goal is that every handbook, every manual, everything is aligned vertically. So often, we have to, when we adopt a new policy, we might have to go back and change or adopt something in a handbook. And those are, this would be specifically the CF Coaches Manual as it relates to van drivers.
Kilby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sabo?
Yes.
Boardner?
Yes.
Hoy?
Yes.
Item six point oh four, I move to adopt the following courses to be offered at Chagrin Falls High School for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school year. Uh, the courses are Introduction to Human Communication, CCP Exploration in Modern Mathematics, CCP Quantitative Reasoning, CCP World Politics, and CCP Comparative Politics. So these are, uh, can I have a second, sorry?
I'll second.
So these are courses, um, that will be offered through Kent State University. That's one of the universities that we use on campus for our teachers to teach courses. Uh, what you need to understand is that these courses are chosen a couple of ways. First of all, do we have a teacher qualified, um, to Kent's standards to be able to teach that syllabus and that content? And second, on student interest. Now, once these are approved and put through, then what happens is they go into a course selection guide, and that course selection guide, then we see how many students are interested. So please know, just because you approve a CCP class, it doesn't mean it will be offered. It means that we have the staffing and the approval from Kent to offer it. And then based on student, um, how their schedules fall, we'll determine what we can offer. And so these courses change often. The one thing that I wanted to remind you, too, is sometimes you'll see us present a more, um, it's more of an application to have a new course, and those are chagrin courses. Those are courses that our teachers are creating based on student interest, aligned to the curriculum, to the standards. And so those applications look a little different than what you're actually seeing for this, and then what we're working to do is to align it, so that even if you're getting the university, because they'll set the syllabus and those kinds of pieces, we're, we're working to get that more aligned, so that you'll be able to differentiate the two.
These are nice, though, these are the ones that are Kent State, but they're in-house, so that the students don't have to travel.
Top by Chagrin. Is there a minimum threshold of interest that there needs to be before you'll actually offer it?
Because we have those great, like, students.
It really boils down to the number of students who have the interest, and whether or not the schedule will, will permit it. So, and specifically, I know in math, they were looking for some new electives, kind of, if you will, new pathways, journeys, and the CCP is really nice.
Yeah.
Um, and then I think there's some social studies and pieces in there. So, I'll be curious if we offer all five, would be super exciting.
Yeah.
But, um, even if we can add a couple, at least by you approving it tonight, it can go in the course guide.
You know, I'm geeking out about problem reasoning.
Hmm, there you go.
All right?
All right, uh, Miller?
Yes.
Sabo?
Yes.
Boardner?
Yes.
Hoy?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Item six point oh five, I move to approve the Facility Improvement Plan as presented, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Sabo?
Yes.
Boardner?
Yes.
Hoy?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Item six point oh six, resignations, I move to approve the staff resignations as presented, do I have a second?
I'll second.
This is all pretty standard, so unless there's some piece that I need to add, I typically won't comment on these categories, because they'll exist in every...
Yeah.
Uh, Boardner?
Yes.
Hoy?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sabo?
Yes.
Item six point oh seven, I move to approve the following certified staff for additional hours as presented, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
So, would like to talk a little bit about this one, just to do some clarification, because I think there's something super exciting in all of this work, too. Um, but, some have a question about what does six sections stipend for one semester mean? And in our negotiated agreement, if teachers teach more than five sections in grades seven through twelve, they're paid what's called the sixth period stipend. So these teachers specifically have a sixth class. And the contract limits how many teachers can actually have a sixth class, and we do our best to make sure that we keep that at the lowest possible number. But again, when you're talking about adding some of these smaller classes, and being able to add electives for students, having that opportunity is often very helpful in making that happen. So that's what that one is. And the other one, the only reason I'm drawing this out is rarely do we have this happen. And I know it happened a month or two ago with a different building, but I want you to think about this. Master Schedule Committee and planning for the building, we have teachers and administrators, um, through the contract, they sit down and they go through the schedules, and usually there's some checking of boxes, and we're gonna do the schedule this way, and this is how it's gonna be. That's not what's been going on since strategic planning. So the teachers and administrators are coming together and say, how can we do this differently? How do we use time? And these conversations have been fascinating. And so Mr. Malaman is leading the work, and needs to go beyond what we set aside, or what's set aside in the contract for some of these, um, buildings that are on to some really innovative ideas. And if you have a, specifically a sixth grader at CFIS, you may have heard of Thrive Period. And, um, that was all designed out of last year, and I actually got to be a sixth grader. So it was, um, very exciting to see that in action. I don't know, Jared, is there anything else?
Yeah, I mean, not only, I mean, one of the things that's happened in the past is a building might have changed their schedule. We actually share a lot of staff and students across the district about, well, specifically intermediate school and uh, those high schools, so Music is a good example of that. Those teachers traveled between three different buildings, and so when one, so much of change is scheduled, that impacts their ability to move, and then, right now, they're in, last year before they had the change of intermediate school, they were operating in three buildings on five different schedules. Uh, and so that change that Dr. Prinzarski's talking about, with the Thrive Block and Grove Block, allowed for full ensemble for Music and, um, intermediate school for the first time in a number of years, and also worked better with their schedules here on seven twelve. So, um, we're also still just working through the seven twelve on, um, keeping our offerings and people staff, um, those offerings, and also teacher collaboration across the, the seven twelve.
All right, yeah. Across seven, I'm almost done, I'm almost done. I'm working my way up to that gavel. And ju- just for the teacher collaboration, um, so that's the work at seven twelve this year, specifically on aligning the schedules. Um, we have a number of, of courses that are offered in the middle school that are for high school credit. Um, so, um, and then just, uh, the vertical alignment that we've been working on across the district for the last two years. Um, having that happen more regularly on seven twelve's campus, um, with ours, those teachers collaborating. So, it's taken a lot of time, everyone has their own thoughts and opinions on it, and we wanna hear all of those things. So, uh, Ms. Rossi and, and Ms. Desens and I have been working on it, and, uh, we're meeting again next week, and, um, it's been, uh, super collaborative and super fun. It's one of my favorite things to do, actually, so.
Okay, let me bang it down.
Yeah.
I have a question about, so is this, when I read this, it's up to five hours each of these, like, I, that's unbelievable.
But the contract allows for some hours, so this would be in addition to what's...
Okay, yeah, because I was gonna say...
These are additional hours outside of the contract.
Okay, yeah, working with districts across Ohio and Michigan, like, I can't tell you the number of administrators I've had tell me, the months and months they spent working on the schedules, and what an art it is, and all, so I was like, what?
This is the collaborative part of it, so they're, to share their feedback, and it's, again, like Dr. Prinzarski said, above what our contract allows for, so, um, it's not all the time that it takes to build the schedule, but it's the collaborative part, yeah.
Yeah, no, that sounds...
Yeah, the correct, yeah.
Yeah, that's cool among the schools, I have not heard of many schools who do that, so, that's awesome.
Hoy?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sabo?
Yeah.
Boardner?
Yes.
Item six point oh eight, I move to approve the following substitute teachers on an as-needed basis, contingent upon meeting all requirements as presented, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
You're gonna give your, your typical speech, like, we always need more substitutes every...
Everybody...
There, you just gave it.
That's it, the whole speech, we need subs. Yep, you can, we can know how to many subs.
We always appreciate anyone that can give time to be able to be a sub in any of our jobs.
Kilby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sabo?
Yes.
Boardner?
Yes.
Hoy?
Yes.
Item six point oh nine, I move to approve the following exempt staff for additional hours as presented, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Let me talk about this one, all right.
Miller?
Yes.
Sabo?
Yes.
Boardner?
Yes.
Hoy?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Item six point one zero, I move to approve the following supplemental service co-curricular contracts for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, contingent upon meeting all requirements, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Sabo?
Yes.
Boardner?
Yes.
Hoy?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Item six point one one, I move to approve the following one-time payments for OHSA tournament, sorry, O-H-S-A-A tournament responsibilities. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Boardner?
Yes.
Hoy?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sabo?
Yes.
Item six point one two, I move to approve the following volunteers, contingent upon meeting all requirements as presented, can I have a second?
I second.
Discussion?
Hoy?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sabo?
Yes.
Boardner?
Yes.
Item six point one three, I move to approve the contract with Educational Service Center of the Western Reserve for Speech Language Services from January twenty-first, twenty twenty-six, to April tenth, twenty twenty-six, as presented, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Just, um, maybe to add a little depth to this one, sometimes we need a long-term substitute for a very specific certification or area. And so we post those, and we may not find that person. And so then, that's why we are partners with the ESCs, because then we're able to contract for the service to ensure that our students are receiving, um, any service that they need by the highest quality professional. So that's just why this one may look, you're thinking, well, this is a sub, so that's why it might look a little different.
Kilby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sabo?
Yes.
Boardner?
Yes.
Hoy?
Yes.
Item six point one four, I move to approve the contract with Live Nation Worldwide for CFHS Prom for Chagrin Falls High School on May first, twenty twenty-seven, as presented, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do you wanna discuss this one, we already saw this, but it's bad.
So this is, this is a very interesting one, but just, you know, you already approved this. However, it took, um, we had to do some changes, so it took their legal an extended period of time to approve. We just got it back, I would just like to have it approved again by the board, just so that everything is current in the year, and that, um, everything is ready to go. So there's no change whatsoever from what you voted.
Miller?
Yes.
Sabo?
Yes.
Boardner?
Yes.
Hoy?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Item six point one five, I move to approve the purchase of a Bluebird All-American seventy-two passenger bus as presented, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Do we get to ride in it when we first get it? Do we like take a ride around the...
Do whatever you're... Make that a board member experience on the floor.
I was gonna say, yeah, on the tour.
Oh, yeah.
Sabo?
Yes.
Boardner?
Yes.
Hoy?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Item six point one six, I move to approve the contract with Gurney Connect and Create Program for After-School Community Education Program within January twelfth, twenty twenty-six, through June first, twenty twenty-six, as presented, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We're just working, you'll see, coming up even, I think, later on this year, our work with the community ed and how we do programming, and getting some things aligned, and some, um, maybe handbooks, policies, making sure everything is in place. So, we're, we're very lucky that we have individuals that are able to offer after-school programming for our students through community ed, and we've been working to expand that, so this is one of those expansions that they're piloting.
Boardner?
Yes.
Hoy?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sabo?
Yes.
Okay, treasure?
Um, item seven point one is a then and now certificate for almond oil, the amount of eight thousand four hundred forty-one dollars, eighty-eight cents, I'm recommending your approval.
Someone say so.
So moved, I move.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, any questions? Hoy?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sabo?
Yes.
Boardner?
Yes.
Okay, item seven point oh two is the monthly financial reports for November that I presented at the top of the meeting, I'm recommending your approval.
So moved?
I'll second.
Kilby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sabo?
Yes.
Boardner?
Yes.
Hoy?
Yes.
Okay, other business? Public participation? Don't think so. Okay, item ten point oh one, our next meeting, regular board meeting... Okay, item ten point oh one, our next meeting, regular board meeting, will be on February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-six, right here at seven o'clock. No executive session tonight. So I move to adjourn the meeting. Can I have a second?
I will second.
Miller?
Yes.
Sabo?
Yes.
Boardner?
Yes.
Hoy?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.